Cameras on please. Good evening, everyone. I'll just wait for councillors to turn on their cameras. We do need five councillors on screen for us to start. We've got that now, thank you. Good evening councillors, officers and members of the public in attendance and our viewers live streaming tonight's planning committee meeting. My name is councillor Suzanne Newton. I'm the mayor of Daverden City Council and the chairperson of this afternoon's meeting. I declare this meeting open at four thirty one P M. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's planning committee meeting. This meeting is being held virtually and is available for the public to watch via the livestream link on council's webpage. I would like to start by acknowledging the Wondry Woywarran people, the traditional owners of this land, and pay my respects to elders past and present, and recognise their continuing connection to land, water and culture. Item one is membership. I would like to introduce the councillors and senior staff who are with us this evening. Councillor Tim Lawrence, the deputy mayor, councillor Emily Demetriades, councillor Gaetano Greco, councillor Tom Hannon, councillor Trent McCarthy, councillor Susan Rennie, and I don't believe we've got councillor Missina or councillor Williams yet, but hopefully they will be joining us soon. And our offices in attendance tonight are Vanessa Petrie, the general manager, city sustainability and strategy, and Neil Cooney, the manager of city development. Thank you and let's get underway. Item two is apologies. I have not received any apologies for tonight as yet. And item three is disclosures of conflicts of interest. Councillors and officers, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? No conflicts, okay. Councillor's occupational health and safety responsibilities. Councillor has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure anyone attending tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. I would like to remind everyone in attendance to be respectful of each other. And as outlined in our governance rules, please note that councillors or any other person who addresses the meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner. I must take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. Item four is the confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. Councillors, could I please have a mover for the adoption of the minutes of the planning committee which was held on the thirtieth of November twenty twenty three? It's moved by councillor Rennie and seconded by councillor McCarthy. So let's go back to the running sheet. And I'll put that motion straight to the vote. All those in favour? That is carried anonymously, thank you. I declare the motion carried anonymously. And councillors, I will be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of debate on each item. If I think sufficient questioning has occurred, I'll exercise my right under the government's rules to limit questions and ask the debate to commence. Before we can continue, can I please also request you ensure your microphones remain off unless you're speaking? So we'll go on to item five, consideration of reports. Item five point one is planning permit application D four twenty 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 two, forty six Walker Street, Northgate. And officers, over to you for a brief presentation of the item, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillors. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Alex and I'm presenting this application on behalf of the relevant officer of the Shamik Fire, what hits that? And this application is in relation to forty three fourth Street, Northgate. The application seeks planning approval for operations in addition to an existing dwelling and the construction of a detachable outbuilding in an environment of significant overlay and land subject to inundation overlay. The dwelling is the feature of four bedrooms comprised of three existing bedrooms and one additional bedroom enclosed within the proposed detachable outbuilding. The subject is on, the site is on the general and mental zone schedule two and is affected by the environment with significant overlay and land subject to inundation overlay. The site incorporates an overall area of four hundred and ninety five square metres. Seven objections were received against the application on the key grounds of failure to meet four fifty four requirements, excepting high impact on third party trees and obstruction of shared views. The proposal meets all relevant planning policy as far as the modest extension, including dispatch outbuilding to the existing family dwelling on the lot. The application has been referred to and is supported by both Melbourne Water and the Mary Creek Management Committee, subject to conditions which are included as part of the recommendation for approval. Accordingly, it is recommended to support the proposal and issue a notice in addition to grant planning permits subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Do we have any questions for officers about this item? Councillor Hannon?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks to the officers for their advice. Uh, I, I understand from the objections that have been raised, that one of the issues was the height of the, of the walkway on the new, uh, the, the proposed development. Uh, my question is, and I, I note and appreciate previous advice that the applicants proposing to install screening to address that. But I, I wasn't quite, one thing I wasn't quite clear on was are there limits to that screening? So if, you know, if, if that screening was increased, say another half metre or even a metre, would that present any other issues? Or, you know, is there any, would, would there be any issues in terms of the planning system or the building code if that screening was, was further increased? Thank you.
Any other questions, councillor Hannon, through you, Mayor? Um, from the planning, from a planning perspective in relation to planning regulations, it likely wouldn't have any um, negatives or otherwise repercussions. However, uh, there may be other requirements under the building regulations which would be dealt with at a later stage, which may need to be worked through, I suppose, but they would be potentially approved through a report and consent process, um, at the building regulations, or building permits, they're all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillor Hannon?
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this item? No, okay, so we will go on to hearing submissions. We have three submitters who wish to address the planning committee tonight. When I call your name, please turn on your camera and unmute your microphone. You'll have three minutes to speak. Our first submitter is Tom Attar, the applicant, and Tom, we'll just wait for you to turn on your camera. Okay, we've got you here, Tom. Uh, you've got three minutes to speak. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Clint and this is my partner, Tom. Uh, we're both local public primary school and secondary school teachers. Um, we bought our place in November twenty twenty one. Um, excited to ride our bikes to school and plant veggies in the front yard and put down works near our family and friends. Um, we submitted our plans in July twenty twenty two, so now over eighteen months ago. Um, we knew that we needed to renovate to make this our family home. And we're committed to good design, so we want to build a modest, creative and thoughtful project. And so we hired Justin to design it, who is an awarded architect. We intend to live here in the long term. We're not developers seeking to build multiple dwellings on a site or seeking financial gain. We want to build our home. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that all of the regulations were met, and so we hired a building surveyor who ensured that this was the case.
Um, you'll know from reading the planning permit that, um, the proposal is completely compliant with all the building regulations and the objections that have been made aren't, aren't relevant to the planning permit. Um, however, we respect the right, um, of people to object in the planning process. Um, it might appear that there's more community objection to this than there actually is. Our immediate neighbours to the east applied at the same time as us or around the same time for a permit and were granted it for a double story extension. Um, the pass through council without any objections that we're aware of or any delay, and we respect their right, right to build that house and we didn't object to them at all. Um, unfortunately, one of our sets of neighbours lobbied the neighbourhood quite hard um, due to a false perception of their amenity to specific views of distant trees and false ideas about the scale of the project. Um, as they spoke to neighbours around the neighbourhood, they were prepared to exaggerate impacts or claim incorrect or irrelevant impacts that our project would have, and this has created significant delays for us in getting our planning permit for a simple, fully compliant one-story extension. If you read the objections, you'll notice that a number of them have identical wording. A friend of ours in the flats behind, um, who, who received the notice, um, also received written, um, material from these neighbours encouraging them to object. And our, our immediate neighbours who had their projects for a two-story extension approved, um, apologetically approached us, saying they were asked as to object as a favour and, and agreed to do that. Perhaps naively, um, we haven't counter lobbied at all in the neighbourhood because we trust the council's process to be fair and objective. Um, so yeah, as the comprehensive planning report says, none of the objections made are relevant and our application is fully compliant. And while the proposed conditions to the permit aren't really relevant to the planning, or the conditions to approve the permit aren't relevant to the planning permit after waiting for eighteen months, we're happy to accept them and get on with building our home. Uh, thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, so we'll go on to the next speaker, who is Paul Bath, who is objector. Um, Paul, wait for you to turn on your camera and then you'll have three minutes. Is it Paul there or is it Peter?
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can. Please go ahead. You've got.
Okay, I have trouble with my speakers. I have trouble with my speakers and so I can't hear you too well. Could you just indicate that you can hear me, please?
Yes, we can. Please, please.
Thank you. I'm one of, I'm an owner of one of the Ross Street apartments to the rear. In the agenda today, there is listed a response to objector concerns. One of the headings is out of character. In this, it is stated that the height of the elevated habitable bedroom to the rear of the site is excessive and should be lowered as it obstructs shared views. There is a one-sentence reply to this only. It says that the low height of the proposal is in keeping with the pattern of development of the area and is an acceptable response in a residential setting. Well, I'm putting to you that there is no pattern of development in the area. All the back portions of the Walker Street blocks are open. It will be excessive to the viewing from the east, west and the south. There is no specific comment as to the view from the Ross Street apartments. Comments seem to be mainly related to the Mary Creek area. There is no necessity for this outbuilding to be raised so high. One hundred year flood levels can be attended to by raising the building from the ground to some degree, but only to allow access to bicycles, wheelbarrows, et cetera. Not a full walk-in garden area at the rear neighbour's expense. The plans have the floor level of this outbuilding the same as the main house to the front. What is the need for this? There is a ramp down to the back garden, then a ramp up to the entry of the outbuilding. Lower the outbuilding and reduce the ramp. Overall, the back outbuilding will be a small lighthouse to the occupants at the east and the west, but especially to the apartments at Ron Ross Street. Common sense says it must not be as high. There is no sound reason for it to be so. Fairness to the neighbours must come into a council decision, not just building regulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Bath. We heard that very well. I'll now go on to number three, Thomas Jones, the chairman. And Thomas is speaking on behalf of Rebecca Gray and a number of neighbours in the area. Thomas, can you please turn on your camera?
All right, you can see me and hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Um, thanks for this time today, everyone. Um, as noted, I'm speaking on behalf of Rebecca Gray, forty two Walker Street, Step Montalto, forty eight Walker Street, and Ross names of fifty Walker Street and Paul Jones of sixty five Walker Street. That's in addition to myself, my wife Naomi at forty four Walker Street. Um, I suppose it's quite easy to say that we are the neighbours that have been, um, quite frustrated with this. Um, we have recently gone through our own renovations, forty four Walker Street, and, um, have been in close conversation with Steph and Paul at forty eight. And, uh, as noted previously, are not objecting to their proposal. Um, the main reason for this is, um, you know, we're, we're all happy to see development in the area. We're in, in a city suburb where it's important to uh, have a degree of densification, whether, uh, for a single dwelling or multiple dwellings. But the main concern is that shared amenity across, um, the string of houses on, uh, on the south side of Walker Street and the apartments to Ross Street as well, where we have uh, long skinny blocks with a shared view out to Mary Creek and the tree canopy above. Um, the proposal, uh, as noted previously, continues the front um, floor level through to the back fence, which means that that floor level at the back is close to three metres out of the ground. Um, my understanding is that, uh, for the hundred mil, hundred year flood overlay, the proposed dwelling would need to be clear of that. But I imagine that's more in the realm of five hundred mil out of the ground, not three metres out of the ground. Um, I suppose the, the general proposal is if this building can be lowered, as noted previously, a lot of the concerns from the neighbours on all sides would be mitigated. Uh, this wouldn't have any impacts on, um, on access to that, um, outbuilding, uh, access to natural light, access to landscaping, but it would have a much improved impact on the neighbours. The main access to the building in current proposal, three metres out of the ground, is a raised walkway along the, um, the western boundary of forty six Walker Street, which, uh, runs above the existing fence level of roughly two metres above ground level with then a, um, a privacy screen above. The privacy screen has the impact of allowing view out while mitigating view in. This creates shadow, overshadowing impacts, um, uh, overlooking to private outdoor space and a severe impact on the, um, overlay flow, overlaying flow of water in the area, which should be noted is highly reactive.
Thank you very much, Thomas. We appreciate your time tonight. Okay, thank you for joining us this evening to make your submissions. Now I'll go on to councillors. Do I have a motion for this item? Councillor McCarthy?
Uh, Mayor, I'm happy to move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have a second there for that motion? Councillor Rennie, councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak to the item?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Look, um, I thank both the, um, the objectors and also the applicant uh, for their submissions and also for the officers for their work in bringing this, um, report to us. I do want to start by saying that, um, having previously represented that area, I'm acutely aware of the sensitivity of the interface with Mary Creek and, um, obviously any concerns that are expressed around how we are aware of that, both that interface, but also ensure that, um, any, any buildings, any developments, um, any renovations, anything of any nature is in accordance with the rules, um, that are provided to us and the regulations and guidelines provided to us by, um, Melbourne Water and by Mary Creek Management Committee. And it's on the basis of both the recommendations and proposed conditions and amendments that they've put forward, um, that I'm happy to support the officer's recommendation that we have in front of us. Um, and I think all, all councillors take seriously objections and concerns, but I think we also need to follow what is available to us as the recommendation based on the officer's assessment, but also on the, uh, information provided by those authorities. As I'm there, I'll chair of the meeting. I'll, I'll just, um, uh, note that there are a number of conditions that have been added. Um, those conditions do go some way to, um, addressing some of the concerns that have been raised. And I think importantly, um, require, uh, some modifications to the application that we have before us. On that basis, I'm happy to support it and, um, I'll close my comments there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rennie is the seconder. Would you like to speak to the item?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, um, in cases like these, I'm always guided by what is in, uh, the relevant clauses of the planning scheme. And there are some telltale signs when people are pushing things too far. They include, um, heights that are in excess or close to the allowable heights. Um, the heights proposed here, um, notwithstanding, uh, what the objectors are saying about being high, the heights proposed are actually not even close to the maximum allowable heights. The building footprint on the land is well below the maximum allowable building footprint on the land. The permeability is well above uh, the standard for permeability. And so these indicators tell me that in fact this application is not pushing the limits in any way. It's a reasonable proposition from, um, uh, owners who wish to build a home that will suit their needs into the future. And, uh, whilst we're often reluctant to see change, and I thank the objectors for coming along, I don't believe there's any, um, grounds on which we can reasonably, uh, deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other further speakers to be cited? Last opportunity, would anyone like to speak to this item? No, okay, so councillors will put this one to the vote. All those in favour? That is councillor Nushen, councillor Rennie, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor McCarthy and all those against. Councillor Hannon, councillor Williams, all those sustaining. Councillor Demetriades, uh, councillor Messina, how are you voting?
I voted for and you read out mine.
Well, sorry, yeah, so that motion is passed. Uh, so we will go on to the next item, just speak with me. So issue a notice of decision to grant a planning permit. So the planning committee has decided to support the application and issue a notice of decision to grant a planning permit subject to conditions. This decision is not final and objector can appeal the decision and the applicant can appeal any conditions that they can. The process of appeal is subject to timeframes detailed on the documentation to be sent to the objector and applicant. We will now go into the second item, which is item five point two, planning permit application D seven six nine twenty twenty two for one five four High Street in Northgate. Officers, we'll go over to you for a brief presentation of the item. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, councillors. Application D seven six nine twenty twenty two is for the construction of a six-story mixed-use building and reduction in the required provision of car parking. The proposed uses within the building include office, retail, bar and spa. The bar, retail and office uses do not require a planning permit under the scheme. The spa use as leisure and recreation does require a planning permit. The site has an overall area of three hundred and ninety nine square metres with frontage to High Street and also to Park Street and slopes approximately two metres from north to south. The site is within commercial one zone as well as DDO fourteen and DCPO. The zoning of the site is what results in the requirement for a permit of spa use as leisure and recreation. The zone and DDO both require a permit to buildings works. The zone itself has no height limit, but the DDO includes a four-story discretionary limit for this area. The DDO also has discretionary requirements for ten-metre street walls with levels above that to be set back an extra one point five metres per level. Due to the proximity to the tram line running along High Street, the site also benefits from moderate reduction in car parking rates below the standard required, but still needs a permit to provide less as it has thirteen of the required thirty-six spaces. The application went to notice and received sixteen objections. The objections primarily centred on concerns with height and setbacks of the proposal overshadowing as well as car parking and traffic impacts. Many objections also raised the permit exempts use, exempt uses and their particularly those of the bar. They also raised overlooking, which is not applicable to commercial developments in the way it is for residential. The proposal exceeds the four-story discretionary height limit of the DDO by two stories, as well as the street wall height requirement by ninety five centimetres and the upper levels setback requirements for levels three and four by sixty centimetres. These variations are considered appropriate as they support delivering economic, transport and environmental aspects of our policies for activity centres. The car parking waiver being sought is also considered suitable, as it is equitable, delivers the best urban design outcome and avoids unreasonable impacts on surrounding residences. Accordingly, it is recommended to support the proposal and issue a notice of decision to grant planning permit, subject to conditions.
Thank you. Sorry, just let me go back to the running sheet. Are there any questions of officers regarding this item? Councillor Greco, go ahead.
Thank you, um, Mayor Newton. Um, my question is, so that we get a, a clear understanding. Um, in regards to this application, can the officers through you, uh, Chair, can the officers just go through how this application differs from previous applications that have been made to council? Um, in terms of applications that have been refused and also understand the application that, that have been, um, approved. So could officers please just give us a summary of how this application differs from previous applications? Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, councillor Greco, through you, Mayor. So this application is for the height of twenty metres overall. There was a previous permit issued on this site before one twenty sixteen, back in twenty sixteen, for a taller building, taller by twenty five centimetres. Uh, the upper levels of that building were also notable in that they generally, whilst the form was articulated, that generally included lesser upper level setbacks. So the form is more substantial at that upper level. I'd also note that that approval was for an apartment development in the commercial zone, whereas this is for a mix of commercial uses in the commercial one zone, so it's more consistent in avenue with the zoning and overlays desired for the area. There were subsequent amendments that were sought to that permit which was granted for that large building. Those amendments sought even further height. That additional two-story application was refused. And then another application for townhouses on the site was also refused. The permit which, uh, persisted after that, uh, continued until the end of twenty twenty two, at which this, at which point it expired and around that time, an application was made, this application for a marginally reduced height commercial mixed-use building. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Greco, did you have any further questions?
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, do we have other questions for the officers? No, okay, councillors, do we have a motion? Councillor Hannon?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm happy to move the officer's motion, officer's recommended motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second there for that motion? Councillor McCarthy, councillor Hannon, would you like to speak to the item?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, uh, look, as, um, as we've heard, I, I think this, um, proposed development has, brings a lot of, um, opportunities to the area. Um, it's down towards the, the south end of that, uh, strip of High Street on, uh, on top of the hill at Rutgers Hill. Um, economically, in terms of transport, environmental benefits. Um, it's, it's really, uh, interesting to see post-COVID, the sort of work from home, play at home, uh, shop local, um, trends playing out and something that in a general sense, council is very supportive of. Um, you know, it, that itself brings economic, social, environmental issues. Um, and it's, it's great to see, um, uh, uh, people bringing forward these kind of opportunities which are aligned to our, uh, uh people bringing forward these kind of opportunities, which are aligned to our um commercial focus areas, our, our, aligned to uh, so that the main shopping strips. Um, and, you know, a, a large number of new office uh office, offices being created potentially as part of this application. Means will people be working, I'm not sure if it's going to be full-time or part-time, but working locally in the area. And, and, you know, this sort of hospitality and other business opportunities that go along with that, that number of people working at the southern end of this commercial strip. In terms of transport, it's hard to imagine a better, um, I sound like a real estate agent now, but transport, uh pub, connections to public transport. The point is, you've got a tram running down um High Street, you've got two trains stationed within a couple hundred metres walk, there's a bus the next block. So uh while I appreciate the concerns about um parking in particular, um, I think, you know, the, the, there's, there's good reasons to expect that they will be manageable. Um, there was a survey done by the applicant in terms of um how it's expected to play out. Um, and there was minimal, minimal um pressures, additional pressures expected. Um. And a reminder, as um, as staff have pointed out, that this, this uh is not the first time there's been an application on this site. Previously, council actually, actually approved a bigger and, and bulkier at the top application. Um, a tall, bigger in terms of height. Um, and uh, so this, this uh is, is a redesign uh and has been done in a, in a thoughtful way. Um, the spa is in particular brings a, you know, a, a new, a new, something new to the mix of High Street. And um I, I think, I appreciate the objections that have been raised, but I think they've been well dealt with by the conditions in the proposed um, the requirements in the proposed uh motion. Thank you.
Councillors, I, I'm very sorry about this, um, but there are actually submitted this item. Um, so I am sorry, I'm gonna have to pause uh the debate and we'll just go back to the speakers and I do apologize about that. Um, so let me just go back to my running sheet. And um the first person that we have to speak is Marita Brasher, who is an objector. Um, so Marita, would you like to turn on your screen? Thank you. And Marita, you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Um, I'm a local resident. Um, this uh proposed um development is um not appropriate for the local area, is actually a residential area. I was walking home around eleven thirty on um Saturday night and I could hear the crickets. We do not need another bar in Northgate. There's at least five bars two hundred metres down the road and at least ten bars another two hundred metres up the road. The previous planning applications did not include bars, especially on a fifth level, um especially with an external balcony where the noise will carry. Um, it'll change the neighbourhood with people coming to and from that bar. Um, yes, it's in definitely inappropriate. Um, I noticed that councillor um Tom didn't mention the bar at all. Um, there are multiple empty shops down in Westgar for office spaces. There's multiple empty shops further up in Northgate as well. So I'm not sure about the economic um, um status of this um, this planning permit and the opportunities to the area. Does Northgate really need another bar? Um, at all? Um, also the reduction in parking, um, yeah, it, the, the permit previously was residential. Um, yeah, we have issues. It's a local area. We have heritage listed dwellings a hundred metres from this area as well. We have uh areas that have old people um living and we have a um, an older person living across the road as well. Uh, this is not a commercial area, it is a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your submission, Marita. So we will now go on to our next objector, which is Sue Johnson. Sue, can you please turn on the camera? Okay, I might uh go on to the next person and we'll see if we can come back to Sue. Um, John Lamaka, as an objector, are you able to turn your camera on?
Yep. Just done that, does that work?
Can't see yet, John. Um. Do you wanna try again?
Um, is there anything else I can press?
No worries, John. Um.
I'll just, I'll just speak to the uh. Um, thank you for the uh, the opportunity to speak. Uh, hopefully I don't run over the three minutes. But look, I'm, I'm, I'm quite surprised, sorry, I own the property um adjacent to the development of one nine three Clark Street. Um, my property is actually mentioned quite a few times in the various documentation provided by the applicant. Um, and I must admit, I'm surprised that both the um officers and indeed some of the councillors have spoken in support of the proposal, um have overlooked a number of issues that are very, very clearly uh outside of the planning requirements for the for the city of Darabin. Um, leaving aside the issue of the four stories versus six stories, um other than to say that the um uh consultants have actually, I, I won't say lied, but certainly um misappropriated some information in relation to um uh agreeing to a six-story or uh suggesting the six stories is appropriate. They indicate that there is a six-story apartment building to the east. That's blatantly incorrect. It's a four-story building that's adjacent, adjacent to it. And there are two-story, uh four-story, which is on a split level towards the back of the proposal. Their own documentation on page twelve, figure twelve of page twelve, the town's report clearly shows that it's a four-story building, so six is just by way of uh size way too much. Um, overlooking, this thing looks straight into bedrooms and private open space. Um, I provided photos. I trust that the um councillors have uh looked at the um, the, my submission and indeed the photos. Um, overshadowing, you know, even their own reports confirm that the quote-unquote shadow does encroach into the residential property line. And it, it, again, their own report shows that it, it, it uh impacts it the whole of the day. Uh, parking is, you know, uh, a major issue there, you know, thirty-six, I think, and thirteen were the, the two figures that were quoted. Um, you know, leave aside the fact that this bar will probably be open till, you know, all hours of the morning. Um, I'm sure councillors understand that public transport doesn't run till those hours and um there's just gonna be cars uh, you know, parked in the residential area. You know, clearly that's just gonna impact the amenity of place. Um, specifically as far as the um uh rooftop uh bar is concerned, um your own planning scheme requirements uh in relation to noise sources five two point two zero dash six one four states, quote-unquote, that noise impacts from sources should not be located near bedrooms of immediately adjacent existing dwellings. The proposed rooftop bar is directly opposite the bedroom in our property, which is approximately six metres, not nine metres, as stated in the consultant's report, uh at the closest edge of the proposed rooftop bar. Um, the, the rooftop bar again is just inappropriate. The planning schemes clause five two point two seven, uh thirty-one oh seven two eight, V C one four eight, licensed premises requires that the licensed premises are situated in appropriate locations and ensure that the impact of licensed premises on the amenity of the surrounding area is considered. The proposed bar is located less than six metres from a bedroom and this thing's gonna be operating all hours of the day at night.
That's timed. Thank you very much. You've had your three minutes, but thank you very much for your submission. And we will now go on to Yasmin Morka as the objector and Yasmin is also speaking on behalf of Gillian Dickman. And Yasmin, you will have three minutes to speak, um but let me know if you need extra time because you're speaking on behalf of two people.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. Um, echoing much of what um has been said, I guess, from John as well. So I'm a resident, uh, an owner of one nine five Clark Street, the apartment building that uh is only four stories, a few doors down the street. Um, in terms of the reduction in car spacing requirements, um, I'm of the belief that this is an impractical solution. While I'm as much as the next person all for use of public transport and do so myself every day and ride a bike, uh, the idea that only two car spaces are needed to service a hundred and fifty patron rooftop bar um to cover staff that will be leaving at one or two in the morning, based on the potential um licence arrangements that have been stated in the application, seems to be far too low. Um, Clark Street itself has a fair few local residents who park in that street. So if we're not providing those car spaces, then instead it'll be local residents who are displaced in preference of those staff who are working in the building. Um, the consultant also seems to reference some very outdated and irrelevant parking studies um for hotels in very different areas within Melbourne and very much pre-COVID related travel patterns. Um, the traffic in the area um is quite a, I guess it's a narrow street in Clark Street, uh quite a habit of people trying to gun the intersection and not get stuck. Um, adding multiple movements per day into a crossover in that space um as well as larger vehicles for deliveries and rubbish is just gonna add another conflict point and further decrease the safety of the intersection. Um, I noticed that the consultant states a lot around, I guess, ticking boxes for sustainable transport with bicycle loops on Clark Street, though the footpath currently has no space and would not be DDA compliant if it, yeah, we still were provided. Um, there's also, um, yeah, and, and not a, a great detail around the proposed uh use of ride-share and taxis to the rooftop bar, which again would be highly likely, given the um, the licence hours that they're proposing. Uh, it's a no-stopping zone on High Street, so we're either gonna have people stopping in that area um or potentially in the area where there's already a, a, I guess, a tricky and uh quite often um road rage filled merge with the trams along High Street. So more conflict points. Um, and I guess, speaking as a resident, um, the architectural landscape of the area, we've got a bunch of, you know, lovely uh heritage um covered terraces down the street, lovely old weatherboards and a six-story development with a rooftop bar really just becomes an eyesore in that uh part of the world, along with the lovely views we get from Ruckers Hill Bridge. Um, and finally, obvious, and a very obvious one that again, I think has been quite glossed over is the, the noise impacts um of a rooftop bar for a hundred and fifty patrons. Um, when it's purely unnecessary this far from the main part of High Street. As Marita mentioned, it's a, it's a lovely residential area. While we love servicing the bars in High Street, we also like that we're a couple of blocks away and can enjoy our residence. Thank you.
Thank you. Yasmin, that was perfectly timed. And we'll now go on to Aidan, who is the applicant. And Aidan, I'll get you to turn on your screen and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, councillors, thank you very much for hosting us in this scorch of a day. Um, just very briefly, before I jump into my submissions, obviously the assessing officers have done a brilliant job at uh summarising this application. So I won't uh go into too much more detail on the commercial component and this being a residential context. We just need to re-emphasise that we are in fact within a commercial one zone with the, not within the Northgate Major Activity Centre. Um, from the commencement of our engagement on this matter, it's been sort of our responsibility and opportunity here to make sure we're facilitating a an outcome that's not only functional, um but represents a much better design outcome than what was previously approved. There's been a long history with this site because of the viability of actually doing anything on it. Um, we've been able to put together a scenario here that not only it looks significantly um improved from what was previously approved, uh with less built form and massing, um but also provides a um, a more appropriate response to, response to the strategic context. Um, there's so many detailed aspects of the proposal that we'd like to speak on, but our time is short, so we'll keep it relatively short and sweet. Um, consistent with the strategic aspirations of the zones and as highlighted by, I believe it was Jack earlier, uh the council officer. We've got a healthy mixture of diversity of commercial land uses here. Ground floor, what will be a food and drink premises, a first floor day spa, which will be the first of its like um in the area. Uh, quality upper-level office space, which is uh new and in demand in the, the Northgate Major Activity Centre, as well as a rooftop bar. Uh, on the note of the rooftop bar, we, we have acknowledged through the application process that we uh don't trigger a planning permit for the use nor the sale and consumption of liquor, but we've tried to do as much work as we can around detailing how noise impacts will be managed. An acoustic assessment was prepared by an engineer detailing how the aisles of that bar will and must be um dropped till ten AM in extern, sorry, ten PM in external areas. Um, and it'll be capped from there. Um, beyond that, I can just see I'm running out of time. Um, as we've already discussed and highlighted, uh we're resulting in a design response that presents a more clear architectural narrative, a higher quality contemporary built form response. And ultimately, whilst an additional story, uh less in overall building height than what was previously approved, uh we've done a lot of work with council offices, urban designers, um including our own urban designers to make sure the visibility component of the proposal was limited from that key point at the top of Ruckers Hill. Um, look, all in all, we're facilitating an outcome here that we're really economically proud of, environ, from an environmentally sustainable design perspective, really proud of. Um, and considering the, the strategic context, being in a corner, major activity centre, commercial one zone, um and the abundance of other public transport and active transport opportunities, we're really happy and balanced with the functionality of the outcome we've put forward here. Um, and all to that, all we can really say is we, we implore you to take the recommendations of the expert officers you've engaged to make these assessments and recommendations for you and if you have any questions, we're here and happy to answer them.
Thank you, Aidan. That's time. Uh, councillors, I do apologise about um missing the speakers. Uh, they must be getting to me as well. Um, but I understand process-wise, what we will do now is we will restart the debate where it was. So councillor Hannon, I understand that you finished your debate. Thank you. Uh, so we'll go to the second, uh, was that councillor McCarthy? Yes, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve my right as the second to me, okay?
Sure. Uh, are there any further speakers to this item? Councillor Reni.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll jump in and I've really pondered this one, I think, because I'm very, very aware of the location and um spent a lot of time in this part of Northgate. Um, there are some things about this height and built form that I think are not um ideal in this location because of the way it sits on the top of the hill. However, I think the thing that swayed me in favour of um being able to support it tonight is the fact that it's an improvement on the existing planning permits already in um being granted at the site. And so, um, you know, if we don't ensure a planning permit here tonight, the applicant could fall back on a planning outcome that would be worse on a number of levels than this. And actually, I think there's some really interesting things that will take place in this building, um that will be an addition. Uh, an additional offer to the Northgate community and people who live in this state. So um I understand the concerns of objectors. I've particularly been looking at bulk in that built form and how it stacks up against the Telstra building next door. It is a little bit high, but it's much finer in terms of its presentation. And I think that in some ways it will actually hide the ugliness of that Telstra building, which is not um visually appealing at all. So um it would be good, I think, to see something built on this site. It's been clear for a long time, something will always be built on the site. And um I think this is a reasonable planning outcome. And I think the spa is a really interesting addition to the area that um judging from the number of people using the spa and hot water areas at the Northgate Pool, I believe is um entirely warranted and will be mu, highly sought after. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other further speakers to this item? Councillor Lawrence? So councillor Lawrence, did you wanna speak?
Yeah, sorry. Um. Yeah, look, I've been really struggling with this application. Um. Mainly, uh, you know, listened to the arguments in, in regards to the heights and, you know, obviously, um uh six stories is not necessarily out of order um in this location. But I do feel, don't feel uh like su, supporting this application because fundamentally um because of the quirks of, you know, past historical decisions on commercial zoning, um we have a planning permit triggered by a spa use, which I suppose was not, you know, uh so envisaged in the past by um um, dare I say, men in suits who drafted these things. Um, and then we have a sort of free-for-all on the bar situation. And I, um while it's a sort of micro bar and these bars can be quite um safe and good quality outcomes, the, the, the lack of controls at the moment on going through with this permit on the outdoor rooftop bar. Um, you know, I, I guess I share the residents' concerns on that. I do think rooftop bars, you know, can add an incredible atmosphere to the, you know, High Street and Plenty Road. But in this case, I don't think I can support the application because we're not, we're not building in enough controls over that use.
Thank you, Council Lawrence. Are there any further speakers to this item? No. Okay, Council McCarthy, I'll go back to you a second. Would you like to close the debate?
Thanks, Chair. Probably just would like to highlight that some of the issues raised by objectors, absolutely, I think we should always be concerned about in relation to any use that is in a commercial zone but which has residential either abutment. But in this case, it's more about proximity, which is what I've heard. And I do know the area very well. I've observed the change that we have seen in parts of that section, particularly obviously with the tram work, the tram stop upgrade, which was some years ago now, but it has, it has set the tone for what the Northcote Structure Plan did put in place, which was envisaging the transformation of some sites where there were opportunities for investment. And in this case, a mixed-use approach to the development with that mixture of both, in this case, office and sort of recreational and also entertainment, or in this case, a bar. Some of the amenity issues that have been raised and issues around noise impacts, those issues actually have to be addressed through the potential granting of a liquor licence. So whilst we may wish to consider those as primary concerns here, it is important to recognise that the application, as it's put before and recommended by officers, is compliant with what council needs to consider, including the conditions that have been proposed. But those arguments are going to be carried out in relation to the Victorian Legal Licensing Authority and how they approach this. So I would just encourage all parties, if this does get supported, to have those debates in that forum. What I would also say is that from a, an amenity point of view, one of the balancing acts that council has is to recognise this is a commercial strip. A bar is, as the report notes, an as-a-bright use. So whether or not that's the primary concern for some people, it is actually commercially allowable under the commercial zoning that we have in front of us. The site is well-served by public transport. And I think it would be a benefit for all to concern to take on board some of those questions about how we manage transport and access. Chair, I'll end it there because I know my time's elapsed, but thank you for the time and thank you to the objectors and the applicant for their contributions.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. So that now closes the debate and I'm going to put this item to the vote. So all those in favour, that's Council Newton, Council Messina, Council McCarthy, Council Rennie and Council Hannon, all those against, Council Greco and Council Williams, all those abstaining, Councilers to meet your artists and Council Lawrence. Okay, so that item is passed. Just go back to my running sheet. So issue a notice of decision to grant a planning permit. So the planning committee has decided to support the application. Issue a notice of decision to grant a planning permit, subject to conditions. This decision is not final and objector can appeal the decision and the applicant can appeal any conditions that be cut. The process of appeal is subject to timeframes detailed on the documentation to be sent to the objector and applicant. So we will now go on to item six, which is other business. We have six point one, general planning information scheduled for the CAT applications. Do I have a mover for this item? Council Williams, and do I have a second of this item? Council Messina will go straight to the vote on this one. All those in favour? That is carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. And item seven is consideration of reports considered confidential. We do not have any confidential reports to consider this evening. Item eight, closed meeting. Councillors, as there is no other business to consider this evening, I would like to declare the planning committee meeting closed at five twenty-five. Thank you and good night to our viewers, councillors and officers, and I'll now ask that the livestream is ceased.